The special meeting, study session for November 12, 2012. We're at the point of where there's an approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
I got a motion by Ms. Buckley, supported by Ms. Fundenberg. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I would move to amend the agenda. The following two items I'd like added. Item number eight, I'd like us to change that to possible action. Do you want me to offer the other one as a separate amendment offering, or do you want them both?
Go ahead.
The second one is, I'd like time at the end of the meeting to go into executive session to discuss the concern about an employee improperly using email to influence this Board of Education.
Support.
Okay, we can probably do the executive session if nobody complains at the end with the superintendent's evaluation. Is everybody okay with that? Because, okay. Is that all right with you, Mr. McLaughlin?
That's, that's fine.
Okay, so that'll be tagged.
So then the amendment would just basically be about the changing aid to possible action, not definite action, but possible action. I want to reserve the right to offer a motion from the table.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye.
Are we voting on the amendment or the agenda?
Well, we have changed it, we amended it, so.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize you, you were changing aid. Then my vote is aye.
All right. Okay, all opposed, say aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
All right, let's try this again, folks. Sorry, folks, we're nervous, we never had this many people here. Okay, all right. Motion on the table for the agenda, it's been amended with item eight as a possible action item. Is there any questions about that? Okay, all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Great, 7-0. All right. Next item that we have is Barth Elementary Health Grant by Ms. McCollum. All right, Ms. Goka.
Unfortunately, Pat McCollum is not here tonight due to an illness that she's been dealing with for the past year. Last year, this grant came across my, through my email, and I passed it on to Pat, and she was willing to apply for this grant, which was quite a bit of work, so that's what she did for her PLT last year. And come May, we received the grant along with, we were one of 20 schools in, throughout the state of Michigan. I would like to introduce you at this time to, students refer to her as Ms. Jenna, and she's from Wayne State University, and she is part, she is part of this grant, she comes and does some in-servicing with our students. Also, I have our students here tonight, and we will just enjoy.
Hello, my name is Jenna Ackley. I work with Wayne State University, the Center for School Health, which is part of the College of Education. And as Mrs. Goka mentioned, Barth Elementary was accepted into a grant, a one-year grant, that's funded through Wayne State University, as, as well as Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and other partners. And it's a one-year program, or grant, and Barth is one of 20 schools in the entire state that is participating in the program. 16 of the 20 schools are in southeast Michigan, so it spans across the entire county. And my role is the healthy school coordinator position, which my main focus is teaching the lessons in all of the second, third, and fourth grade classrooms. So I'll be coming to the school many times during the year to provide support and almost like a mentorship for the school. So I'll be teaching lessons, and the school has received many different resources. And the wheel on this slide shows all eight of the components of the program. So as you see, the classroom lessons, number two is just one of those components. But the school receives a number of pieces of physical education equipment and recess equipment that they can then maintain for many years. They receive a set of books for their media center that focus on healthy eating and physical activity, that is then able to be used in future years. So all the components that the school receives is meant to make it more of a sustainable change in the school, to make it a healthier environment for the students and the staff. So we're really trying to impact every aspect of school, not just in the classroom, but we want to reach students and parents and teachers on every level that we can. So as you can see, every component is trying to do that as a joint effort to make Barth a healthier school this year, as well as in the future, because this grant is only for one year. So we want to make it as sustainable as possible for the school to be able to do all these things on its own. So that's what all these components are talking about. So the students are going to go into each one of those in more detail, so you can learn more about what the impact has already been at Barth since starting only a couple months ago. So a lot has been going on in a short period of time, so.
Actually, she needs it for home.
Ms. Jenna made up a game called the salad. Fun for kids to eat the healthy snack, lettuce, chocolate. Tomato, march. Salady, junk meat. Peppers, sludge. Bellary, side of salad.
I'm going to be on the spot today because we had another student did not show up, but he was from my classroom, and one of the changes we're making in schools.
Excuse me, can you get the mic? So they can hear you at home? Yeah. Okay. One change that we've made this year is making sure that the, the food that's coming into the school are healthier choices. I'm a second grade teacher, and this year we've worked very hard to make sure that our healthy snacks are all nutritious. Another part of Ms. Jay coming in is, she teaches a lesson, and then with the children they create a healthy snack, which is what we're going to share with you in just a moment, a pumpkin dip with graham crackers. Another activity we did this year was, we took our second graders, along with Hale Creek, they did it on a different day, to blocks, and then after being at blocks, our kids went shopping and brought back vegetables, and then in class we created a vegetable soup, as well as on Halloween, instead of doing our normal junk food, we did happy face smiles with apples and peanut butter, and, we do not have peanut allergies, and also pumpkin smoothies. So just making sure that the food coming in are healthier choices, the students are, they have many more opportunities to taste fruits and vegetables that they may not have tasted outside of this grant.
In gym, we learn epic lessons. We learn a nutrition lesson and play a game like Healthy Snack Tag. Cookie Monster and Candyman make us freeze because it's not good to eat too much, and by naming a healthy snack, we get back into the game.
One second, young lady. Parents, if you want to take a picture of your child up here, just come along the side and take that way you got their, the front of them, you don't have to have the back of their head if you'd like, okay? If you want to go through the hallway, come around the side, you're welcome to, okay? I know it's important.
Well, I don't have to go through the hallway.
Well, the ones on the side. Go ahead, sorry.
With the grant, we got a big cart filled with basketballs, footballs, soccer balls, hula hoops, and jump ropes, so we can be active during recess. We, we got so much equipment from the grant that everyone in the class can get a ball at the same time. It's more fun that way.
At, at the after-school activity club, we eat a healthy snack and, and talk about the healthy tip of the day. We jog around laps. This year, we were challenged by the 19 other schools that got the grant to see who can jog the most laps. So far, we have 2,931 laps. Then we play a fun game.
In our media center, we have a cart filled with healthy food books on how to stay healthy. Here are, here are some examples.
Okay, the last part of it is, we also have a homeschool connection piece. In all the classrooms participating in the grant, we are given a backpack, and in the backpack there is a children-friendly cookbook and different, all the components are up there, different books to go, to share with their family, as well as tip sheets to how to prepare healthy foods at home. So once a week, every child will get this to take home.
So, yeah, so those are all the components of the program, very briefly, but you can see that it's touching every part of the school. And so this is our healthy snack that we made during our first lesson, the week of Halloween. So it is a pumpkin dip, so it's made with pumpkin, a little bit of orange juice, low-fat vanilla yogurt, and honey, and then you dip it in graham crackers. So the kids were surprised that pumpkin is a vegetable, so they're getting a vegetable in their snack without realizing it. So, so that's just a brief overview of the program. Does anyone have any questions?
Can we get the name of the youngsters?
Madison.
Madison, too.
Britt.
Alexis Buckley.
Zoe Smith.
Kira Barnett.
Amari Brim.
Maurice Robinson.
Nicely done, very nicely done. Does anybody have any questions for the young folks?
The dip is wonderful, thank you.
Good.
Yes, it is, it's very good. Didn't know we were getting snacks.
Will they be posting the recipe online, or on, in your newsletter? Okay, I think that would be nice.
I know I've been to some of the schools, and I've noticed that the cafeteria meals, how they've really kind of changed from when I was in school on the, the food they've had. Over at Romel, we were over there, and this young kindergarten was just so amazed that she had broccoli for lunch, and I was like, okay. I would have liked french fries, but, you know, she was pretty happy over it, so, I mean, it made her day, and it's good, glad to see folks thinking about healthy foods, it's great. Okay, anybody else? Thank you, folks, for coming up. Very good, did a very good job. All right. The next one, item of business, parents, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can leave if you'd like, you don't have to stay, it's up to you. The next item of business is an approval of a separation agreement. Everybody should have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
We request the Board of Education to a separation agreement, and release and discharge of all claims as presented. Support.
Okay, I got a motion by Ms. Buckley, supported by Ms. Fundenberg. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, can I get roll call, please?
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Thede?
Yes.
Mrs. Fundenberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Beard, yes. Mr. McLaughlin?
No.
Mr. Kudrick?
Yes. Motion passed, 6-0, 6-1, sorry about that. The next item that we have is discussion regarding the Burton property and offers to purchase with possible action. Go ahead, Mr. Weiss, can you lead first?
Okay, this, this concerns the, the listing of the Burton property, and I have to do a little bit of a mea culpa here. A couple weeks ago, we've been working with one group who's been very interested in the property for probably about six weeks now, through our realtor. Another group also expressed interest more recently. However, one of the concerns we have about this property is that it conceivably could be used as a school to compete with our school, and one of the things that I've talked about with my staff was that in a situation like this, Romulus has a declining enrollment school district, which means that, and basically this part of Wayne County is all declining enrollment, which means that all the school districts are having fewer and fewer students each year. It's nobody's fault, it's related to the birth rate, it's also related to the economy, and the unfortunate thing about that is the taxpayer dollars still go to support schools and education, and the idea of building or starting a new school in a community that has a, a declining enrollment would cause some concerns. The property is listed at $610,000 approximately, and that money would be very much needed by our district, however, if a new school were to open, the economics of that situation would quickly turn around against our district, because depending on how many children enroll in that school, we could be losing several million dollars in funding. Meanwhile, that compounds, in Romulus's case, because we have such a high debt levy in town, our, our Romulus residents pay seven mills worth of debt levy every year, and they would still be paying that, whether our buildings are empty or full, and they would be paying that until 2029. And so that became a concern of mine, I spoke with my staff about it, we were all concerned, and so I, I also spoke with the board president and, and asked him his opinion. We didn't really have time to convene a meeting on the board, and I apologize for maybe rushing into it, however, I don't regret the decision for a minute, I think it was the right thing to do, and I think that the board needed time to discuss. So what we basically did was, we pulled the property off the market, so that the board could have an opportunity to discuss the issue more fully, and look at the, the full-scale financial ramifications of the situation such as ours, and also that the board would have an opportunity here from the public, and I'm, I'm glad to see so many people from the community, and, and also our employees here, who have a vested interest in decisions like this, certainly. So again, I want to apologize to the board, I know one board member in particular is very upset because we didn't take this to the full board, but there are some times when we just have to act before something gets too far down the road. Now the board, well, I'm going to stop right there, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. McLaughlin, go ahead. Thank you. First, I think it'd be helpful for the rest of my colleagues on the board and the audience members in the community to know just what my involvement, how I became involved in this. However, beforehand, I made some notes before I get into that, don't be misled about comments about the debt levy, because the other offer that we just received, where the photocopies are still worn, is a tax-exempt organization, too. So that part of the argument is moot. Don't be misled by the rhetoric going on, okay? Absolutely. I became upset about this. Two weeks ago, approximately, I was in a meeting with the mayor of this city. I think most of the people in this room know, by trade, I'm a political consultant. One of the concerns that came up in that meeting was the mayor's office had received a phone call, and it turns out, the gentleman is here today, from a gentleman from a charter organization. And the concern that led, that was levied with the city, that they were seeking assistance from the city, was they felt that their, they were not being treated fairly, they were not being allowed to inspect the property that we had legally listed for sale. Now I'm going to digress from that conversation for a moment. When this Board of Education voted unanimously, I believe, to list all the property that we're selling, it was discussed on at least two occasions that the possibility that the charter organizations may be interested in buying our property. It would take a fool to not suspect otherwise. Now I'll get back to my involvement. When I met with the mayor, and he shared that with me, we of course agree, it's not the city of Romulus's responsibility or obligation for things that happen with the school district. However, it was not going to be a blown-off phone call that was not returned. With me present in the room, a phone call was made to Jason, and it was stated, I clearly identified myself, and he can speak to this later if he addresses the board, I clearly identified myself, even spelled my name, and made it clear I was not, and nor would I be in a position to negotiate or advocate for the Board of Education, or for the district. I was concerned, and still am, about the process. Ladies and gentlemen, when we, this is no different of a real estate transaction than if one of us had our home or business listed for sale, and decided, you know what, I don't want the Chinese people to buy it, so I'm not going to show it to the Chinese people. That's absurd, and it's illegal. Getting back to where, I ended the conversation with Jason by stating, please keep me informed if there's other issues with the process. We ended the call, I called the superintendent, and I had a conversation with the superintendent. And I told him this was on the radar, and that I had advised, and this is something I just left out, I had advised Jason and his organization to re-initiate their efforts to make sure the process was followed, and contact our administration and Signature and Associates, which at the present time is our real estate agent. Carl, Mr. Weiss, had the conversation with me that perhaps the Board of Education needed to change the listing from a set price amount to an amount to be determined. I questioned that, but I did agree that that might be a way for us to handle negotiations. The next thing I know, we're going to go now to Wednesday, Halloween. I was literally on my way into the high school for a meeting, and my phone rang. Yes, it was Jason, yep. And he said, "Mr. McLaughlin, are you aware of what's going on with your building?" And I said, "No." I was informed via that phone call that the charter organization had, past tense, had an appointment for the following day to inspect the property and make an offer. They were notified by email that that appointment was canceled, and the property was no longer for sale. I ended the phone call, and called the superintendent, and asked him if that was true, that the property had been removed from the sale. He told me, "Absolutely." And I said, "On whose authority?" He said, "Well, mine." He said, "But I did talk with Tom, and got Tom's opinion." I expressed to Carl my issue, this Board of Education, whether it was unanimous or what have you, voted to list the property. Now, before I get accused of violating Open Meetings Act issues, I will just say, and most people in this room know, this is not the first time I've had a concern about the administration backpedaling.
I'm going to stop you right there. If you have a concern about employee performance.
Knock yourself out, we'll go into executive session later, thank you, I'll change the subject. Thank you.
We have our attorney here to comment on the process.
That's nice, oh, I'd love to have the conversation.
All right, all right, folks, folks, we need to.
Not that I'm for or against this, but can I actually see what you wrote to Tom?
Yeah, that's, that's playable. You can see it, because I actually, I'm going to say it.
Attorney needs to speak to the process.
That's exactly what I was getting.
Oh, absolutely. I'd like him to, but I'll finish now, as far as my involvement in this, because there seems to be several employees that are sharing emails about this, which that's another issue we'll get into later. I then called the board president, and had a very frank and admittedly angry conversation with him, and requested a meeting be held immediately to discuss, there was no offer, this is the misnomer out there, there was no offer on the property. My issue was about the process, and I felt the authority of this Board of Education was undermined. A meeting was scheduled for Jan, I'm sorry, November 5th. A conversation was held during the day on November 5th, where I was assured that meeting was still happening. About an hour later, that meeting was canceled, and it is trying, there are people making the implication that that meeting was about the board to discuss the real estate matter. It is also going around many circles that I am a cheerleader for charter schools. I think, again, I'm going to, and I don't mean to keep putting you on the spot, Jason, but I made it clear.
Mr. McLaughlin, let's not single out employees here.
That's not an employee, sir, it's the guy from the charter.
Okay.
Can we clarify his name?
That's why I was just asking.
Absolutely.
I just, that's why I said that, Mr. Sane, but.
No, our employees, what the executive session's about. The other Jason is the one that I was on the phone with.
Okay, the Jason from the, the.
From the charter organization.
Okay, all right. Can we get, Mr. King, would you care to say, or would your associate care to speak on it, on the situation?
Coming up from behind the curtain here.
That's fine, but I'm not, I couldn't remember your associate's name, that's why I said that.
While they're walking up, I just want to preface this by saying, we've been working with our legal counsel through the entirety of this process, making sure that we follow the law.
Okay, sir, we're going to have to have you grab the microphone, because it's going to have to be where they can hear folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How's that? There we go, okay. Gary King, I am one of the attorneys for the, for the school district. On the issue of process, I would state that I share Mr. McLaughlin's concern, and I have been upfront with the superintendent about that. I have concerns about any superintendent of schools taking action from what the board has done, and then taking action which is arguably contrary to that. I believe the superintendent has indicated why he did that, you know, obviously it's up to you folks as to whether that was a good decision, a bad decision, whether you want to simply treat it as though it didn't happen, and the property remains on the market, or if you want to vote for it to stay on the market, or you want to vote to come off the market. Those are all prerogatives that you have. Now, I would point out to you, however, that it's also a moot point to some degree, because you now have offers in front of you, and the offers, as I understand it, I can be, I can stand to be corrected if someone corrects me on this, but as I understand it, both offers came in after the superintendent's conversation with the real estate agent. So there is nothing, if we think about this logically for a minute, there's really nothing that requires that a property be quote-unquote "on the market" for an offer to come in on it. I know a guy, for example, who just bought a house two weeks ago by going up to the door, knocking on it, and saying, gee, I love your property, I'd like to make an offer on it, and he bought it. The property wasn't on the market, per se. So whether or not it's on the market, it's off the market, I would suggest to you that you have a much more important issue in front of you, and that's the evaluation of the offers that you have, because my understanding is you have two of those. This is why I brought along my partner, somebody who actually knows something about real estate, Mr. Larry Pow, who can address the offers for you and indicate to you what, or at least summarize for you what the legalese in it means, and what the offers are, if that's your pleasure at this point in time.
Does anybody else have any concerns about the issue, what's going on so far? Or would you like to hear information about, about the offers?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to finish, because there is one point that, that needed to be made, and it does concern the other offer. Thank you. The other offer, Carl, is this, the, the offer that you just handed us tonight, is that the same church group that we discussed in the library at Romulus Elementary with Mr. Kudrick, myself, and you, present?
I don't recall which church group we discussed in the library, but I will tell you, that's the same church group that's been making offers and counters all along.
And did you not say that your suspicion was that this group based in, this religious group based in Flint was a front for a charter organization?
I said I didn't know that. I said they could be.
I just think, I just think the rest of the board needs to know that conversation in way that when we get handed an offer on real estate, as we sit down to a board meeting, when the superintendent had acknowledged that they were likely a front, that it was highly suspicious that a church group from Flint.
Are you changing what I just said to you? Because I just said I didn't know. And if you're changing.
Your memory is convenient, sir, thank you.
Well, thank you for your comment, but I'm glad that you make that point, because it is important that the board understand that any organization, and the law says, we cannot place any restrictions on, when we sell property, we cannot say, we'll sell it to you only if you do this, or only if you don't do that. So I'm glad you brought that up. I'm not glad that you put words in my mouth.
And since I brought that up, Mr. Weiss, what is the intended purpose from this offer we just received today?
I have no idea.
So had the charter organization not been upfront and said, this is what we're going to do, we wouldn't even be having this conversation today, would we?
You know, I can't make that assumption, Ms. You know, I can't make that assumption, Mr. McLaughlin.
Well, I would have liked, you have said, "Yes."
I think rather than you and I bantering at this point and getting into a last word contest, I think our attorney needs to share some information.
Well, I assure you, I'd win this contest.
All right, folks, let's let our attorney, Mr. King.
Thank you. I'm going, I'm going to turn this over to, to Mr. Powell, who I would ask, address the offers and give you some flavor for what is and is not in those offers, and then I think it would be appropriate for Larry to tell you what your options are at this point. I understand that the agenda has been amended for this to be a possible action item, but it's certainly a discussion item, and it's not something that you have to do something with tonight, but certainly could with the amendment that's been offered and approved.
And, and for the audience, just to let you know, the two gentlemen here are, they're attorneys that the district does hire to represent us in a lot of different things, so just to let you know who they are. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I am Larry Powell with Keller Toma, as well as Gary. Purpose for my speaking tonight is to give you a flavor for looking at this strictly from a business viewpoint, nothing else. I don't want to get into the issue of, nor am I qualified to get into the issue of charter school and whether or not you should sell to a charter school. And as Gary pointed out, you have received two offers now, whether your property has been listed properly or has been taken off of the market improperly. You have two offers to purchase in front of you. You can act on those two offers. You can either decide not to market the property any further and take it off the market completely. You can consider one offer, up or down, or choose to renegotiate and open up the terms of that offer. And likewise, with the second offer, do the same thing, either take it up or down, or reopen negotiations. What I have studied now, since hearing about this issue, are the two offers that I've heard of. The first offer came in dated October 19th, 2012. It was the offer from Reginald L. Williams Ministry. I'm told a gentleman connected to Flint, but actually having an address down in this area, who was seeking to buy it to be used as a church. It's a not-for-profit to be formed, apparently, at least that's the way that the offer was written. Subsequently, just tonight, we received an amendment to that offer, and as I was sitting in the back of the room, skimming it quickly, it appears to be the same, almost the same terms and conditions.
Excuse me, Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I have a question about what, something you just said. The original offer from October 19th was never forwarded to this Board of Education, so we have no clue what the original terms were. So, when you explain the original terms, please make sure you differentiate what the original terms were.
I will. I'll be specific. Do we have a copy of that, Gary? I have a copy with me. I certainly can share it and certainly the superintendent has it, because that's where I received it.
I don't mind waiting for a few minutes for the copies.
Let me, let me be specific as to what the terms are. It was an offer for $610,000 to be purchased on land contract. There was a deposit of $18,300 to be made if the district decides to accept that offer. This is a written document. Upon closing, there was to be a $100,000 down payment, and the balance, $510,000, to be payable in a five-year land contract with a balloon at the end of that five years. The first offer that came in offered to make payments of about $2,700 per month over those five years. That would leave a pretty big balloon at the end. The amended offer by the same principal, I'm told, he's now called God's City of Refuge, but it seems to be the same individual, they are now proposing to make land contract payments over five years, but at $8,333 per month, which I look at as being principal and interest. And then at the end of that five years, there would be a balloon, and from my calculations, it appears that the balloon would be, would be about $81,000 at the end of the five years. Things that I noticed in this document are, there is no provision for any late payment and discussion as to when the payment would be late, discussion as to whether there would be a penalty for late payment. That is something that I think would be addressable. There's no provision for, in a commercial contract, there's no provision, as we often seek, to have attorney's fees and costs added on to the, the principal if, if situation occurs where the district would have to sue for either forfeiture or foreclosure of the land contract. The most important concern, I think, with this offer to me, as a business person, would be the creditworthiness of the buyer. This is seller-financed property. They're not going to a bank. They're asking you to finance it at 5% per interest over the five years with that balloon. There is no indication as to whether or not the buyer is creditworthy. That would have to be something to be studied, seeking proof of, of the creditworthiness. Also, seeking proof that the nonprofit that he's talking about in his offer has in fact been formed and has any credit at all. Lastly, both offers can condition the sale upon an as-is, where-is. In other words, that's what a seller would want nowadays. You're selling it as-is, where-is. You can come and inspect, you can come and look at it, you can determine what's wrong with it, what's right with it, but in the event that you complete that inspection, you are then taking title and, and the terms and conditions of the property are the way they are. In other words, the district would not have to do anything to improve the property before closing. Now, the second offer came in on November 2nd, and I assume this is the offer that Mr. McLaughlin was referencing. It's from School Property LLC. It appears to me to be a for-profit company, but clearly, right in the document, saying with the intent to lease to a public school academy, to be chartered in, in the state of Michigan. This price was for $609,400, so it's basically the same price as the first offer. There's a deposit to be tendered of $10,000 to be escrowed with the title company. The balance of that money will be cash. There's no land contract, there's no financing in any way whatsoever. It's a cash-at-closing balance. They will seek to conduct a survey on their own, but if the district has copies of an old survey, they would like to have a copy of that. The major condition of this offer is explicitly stated, and that is a 90-day due diligence period for the buyer to investigate in any way possible what the property is all about. First of all, it wants to review any and all leases anticipated. I don't think there are any leases, but that's what they want to do. They want to investigate all connections to utilities. They want to obtain any necessary building and use permits and zoning approvals if necessary. They want to obtain a charter to operate a charter school and to lease the same to that charter school. They want to obtain soil and environmental assessments and testing. That is obviously for purposes of determining whether there is any contamination and whether or not they would be assuming liability for that contamination. And then the next one is the option by the buyer to extend the inspection period if they find something they really don't like and they would like to investigate further, they would ask for another 45 days. And this would be also contingent upon, a contingency for getting the charter school approval, which may take more than the 90 days, apparently they feel. Lastly, the offer expires on November 16th, if not accepted by the district. This document also has a provision for attorney's fees and costs if there is a dispute over the, the contract itself, and the prevailing party would be entitled to those attorney's fees and costs. And then the final term that I noticed was that the agreement is assignable by the buyer. In other words, the buyer could buy this and turn around and assign it to a third party. We would have no control, the district would have no control over whether or not they would do so. So, those are the two offers basically detailed. We do have them in written form, as indicated, the superintendent's office provided them to us. I, I think it's important for, for this body to determine whether or not you continue, want to continue to sell the property, number one. Number two, whether you like the first offer or want to renegotiate that first offer before you accept it, and likewise, if not, the second offer, the same way, seeking to renegotiate or accept it as it is. Are there any questions?
I just want to thank you for your explanation. Mr. Chairman, I would request that, that we go ahead and wait a few minutes while copies of that offer are brought before, so we can look at it.
Okay. I couldn't hear what was on. She said, "The audience wants to speak on." Okay, right. There are some people that gave me requests to speak on this Burton property. The first one, when you come up, just come up here and stand in the middle and use the microphone, please, until we get our paperwork here, is, and I apologize if I mess up your name, Alicia Urbain.
Good morning.
Did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
Right. One for one so far.
I'll be happy to pass this off.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. I am happy to be out here tonight. I'm, I'm quite amazed, actually, at the number of turnout you have in listening to the students speak to the Board of Education. Wow. I mean, they have a lot of confidence, and, and that's a great testament to things you guys have done here. I just want to point out a couple of things. I'm with the Michigan Public School, Michigan, Michigan Association of Public School Academies. As you're well aware, state law requires that there's be no discrimination based on education use of the facility, and the attorney did talk about the assignment. You know, any, anybody can buy it and assign it to or sell it afterwards as well, so, you know, pointing that out, that that shouldn't be of much concern, but, you know, parents can, in the state, have a choice between charter schools, public schools. Anywhere in, in your ISD, in your contiguous IS, or contiguous district to an ISD, parents are and choosing public education the way they see best for their children. It's not always because of what you have or haven't done at your school, but because of what fits the needs of their children. We urge you not to make decisions based on, on perceived threats or, or challenges to your education here, but to make decisions based on, on what's best for your school district and what's best for the children of this district, not the adults in the district. You know, we've seen time and time again, charter schools can build in places, anyplace they want, and, you know, you have the opportunity to reap some benefits from this at this time. Down the road, you probably won't, and they may still choose to build here. Other districts are still, you know, meeting the needs of your children any which way that they can, and, you know, you have an opportunity today to reap the benefits of that. And in addition, since these offers came in last week, the legislature has introduced two bills that actually would require you to allow other educational facilities use of that facility before you can sell it to a third party. So, you have an opportunity today to get a, a great value for your land and your property, and I hope that you take that opportunity and think about what's best for the kids, not what's best for the adults around us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You said it.
No.
Right at the table.
Okay, sorry about that. Lansing. Okay, the next person is Mr. Christopher Cornwall. Could you please state your address when, when you speak to? I apologize, forgot to.
The other one is from town.
Thank you. From Algen, uh, Lansing, Michigan.
It's about town.
And that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening.
Yep, you're on.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Cornwall. My address is 500 North Woodward in Detroit, Michigan. I'm an attorney from Dickinson Wright, and I represent School Property LLC. And the reason, the only reason why I'm here is because of the factual situation that I think Mr. McLaughlin accurately stated in his conversations with my client. The only reason why we're here is we've made a full and fair offer for this property. It was listed. We've asked to see the property. We've been told we can see the property, then we were told we cannot see the property. Despite that, we thought, since the building is set for an educational purpose and should continue for an educational purpose, we made a full and fair offer, addressing some of the issues that were raised by Mr. Powell. Some of the reasons why there's some due diligence period in the first 90 days is for the very reason is because we were denied access to the property. And many of those, the, the, the due diligence period can be significantly shorter and will likely be significantly shorter once we have an opportunity to actually have permission to be on the property and conduct what we need to do. The bottom line is, is that all's we're looking for is a fair and reasonable process and not to be discriminated against. We've submitted a valid offer. It's a full-price offer, and we want it to be considered. We did advise, from the very beginning, we were upfront, that it was intended to be for an educational purpose. Okay? As I said before, this building is designed for a school. It should be used for educational purposes, and we think that both the community and the school board, regardless of what type of school is being run at that location, should be supportive of additional educational facilities within Romulus. Because the fact is, is these, these properties or any other properties will be built either here or in an adjacent area that's still going to affect all of us in this community. And we ask you just to take, you know, take that into consideration. Instead, in us, yes, I do say us is Romulus and for neighboring communities in which I am from, is that all of us are affected when it comes to our children, and where our children have the best, and the parents have the best right to make the selection where they think the best educational opportunity exists for their child. So, I do say us in the collective, because I think this is really an issue for the children. And this is an issue also that you're going to get a full payment immediately, once this building closes, and you're not going to have to worry about potential financing issues. Instead of going through with this process, again, the reason why I was here, it was for sale, we're told it's not for sale, we don't like your purpose. And right as soon as you're being told that we don't like our purpose for the reason why this building's, we don't, you know, we just want a fair process and no discrimination. It's a fair offer. We can avoid, again, a lot of these issues with the due diligence, and if necessary, we are more than willing to extend the offer past November 16th in order to make this deal work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next individual I have is Larry Banis.
Gary.
Oh, sorry. Gary. Well, it looked like Larry.
It's a curse for my printing. As you guys know, I'm Gary Banis. I'm a middle school teacher. I'm also the president of the Romulus Education Association, and I'm sort of suffering from teacher voice today, so I do apologize.
Mr. Banis, I'm sorry. Could we, could, since we're doing it with everybody, can we have your address, please?
Oh, Gary Banis, Romulus Middle School.
No, your address. People in the audience are shouting about some people not being from this community. I'd like to know if you own a house in the city.
I'm from Romulus Middle School.
So, the answer to that would be no. I have a personnel directory. Thank you.
Many of the district teachers have joined me here tonight in to show us support, not only to you, but to Superintendent Weiss. We're asking that you do not rush into any hasty decisions that would impact the success and the growth of Romulus Community Schools. Mr. Weiss, as our superintendent, is the person that we did select to provide leadership and direction to our district. And I know from working closely with Mr. Weiss, since he became our superintendent, decisions about education, the schools, and the community are well thought out and carefully made. Recent decisions that had, had to be made, I am confident, were made in the best interest of Romulus Community Schools and the community. Mr. Kudrick is board president, Mr. Weiss is superintendent. I believe are, are acting in the best interest of our schools, and I hope that collectively the board can be unified in a decision that enables our schools to be the centers of achievement and growth to the students and the, the parents of Romulus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person we have that's submitted a request is Kimberly Wells.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Wells. I live at 32 Loza Lane in Belleville. My daughter is a senior at Romulus Community High School. I'm also a graduate myself. So is my sister, so is the rest of my family. I have also family, also that live here in the city, including my son. I have people that live here within the city, so yes, I, I do call this my community. Congratulate me today, everybody. This is my 25th year with the school district. So, I do know when I say that I am from Romulus Community Schools, I do mean from, wholeheartedly, from my heart and soul. I'm from Romulus Community Schools. Went to Gordon Air, went to Merriman, went to South Junior High, went to North Junior High, which now is Romel, Romulus Middle School. And I also am a graduate from Romulus Senior High. I also attended college. And I also contained my cosmetology license from Romulus Community Schools, which I'm very proud of, because that's something that our school district has always built on, is to make sure that our students get the best possible edu- is to make sure that our students get the best possible education ever. And we already know from some of our recent student counts, our student count is already down a little bit here. Now, we've seen what moving charter schools in have done to our, to our south side of our community. Now, you're speaking about moving into a charter school and purchasing to the north side of our community. And I would like to state, just to let you know, that I had some, because I am a Facebooker. I do Facebook quite a lot. And I was a little upset, Mr. McLaughlin, that you come out to the public on Facebook about things that should have been discussed with the board prior to it being put on Facebook. Because where, how were you at the, my thing is, is I know you just said that you are a political consultant, but the questions you would be asked dealt with you sitting on this board about what, from the mayor of Romulus. I think if a question was posed to you about what your decisions would be on this board and how it would be done in here, as a political consultant, you shouldn't have gave a comment on that, because to me, that is totally incoherent with the position you hold on this board. Okay? And so I was a little upset about that. And then to find out that you knew before the school district knew, to find out that you were sitting next to people who are making phone calls to the school district, I was a little offended by that, Mr. McLaughlin. Our union has always come out and supported you in every movement that you have made. We have taken cuts. We have taken sacrifices. We have made sure, you know why? Because these are the people that live in your community right here. And charter schools, yes. If I've been reading up on it, I've been making sure that I educate myself also. And it does, it's very devastating to your, to your public school district when you bring in a charter school into your district. And you're locating it right in walking, walking distance into, into the school. So, yeah, I do have a problem with that, because I know how much these people have sacrificed for the school district. And I know how much that they have given up to make sure that we stay a hometown community, that we make sure that we educate our children and have hearts and souls to educate those children, because those are our neighbors' kids. Those may be your cousins' kids. Those may be your, we're all, we all know each other. I know John from school. Tom, your dad worked with my dad. That's what I mean. This is a hometown community. Okay? Charter schools are picked by lotteries. All right? And if your kid don't make the grade, right, or they got 300 people that showed up, like I said, the more I read up on it, and you need to check into how charter schools and outsourcing worked in Pennsylvania. You need to check out the way they're trying to push this, this agenda that they have on bringing these charter schools in. And stand behind your public education. I am a proud graduate of Romulus Community Schools. And I, and all I have to say left is, way to go Eagles!
Mr. Chairman. Hey, we're gonna let, we're gonna let everybody finish, Mr. McLaughlin. No, she brought my name into it. I'm responding now. Mrs. Wells, you are absolutely entitled to your opinion and your criticisms, but for the record, as you well know, since I do know you spend a lot of time on Facebook, that Facebook post was not made until after last Monday's meeting was canceled. Last Monday's meeting was for the sole purpose of me having a conversation with my colleagues about my involvement in this. I knew nothing about an existing offer, and as far as you standing here glaring at me about charter schools, not once have I said I support charter schools and I resent the implication. Thank you for your input.
Well, maybe you should have worded it different there, Rob, on that Facebook.
No, it was intentionally worded the way it was. Thank you very much. Folks, both of you, both, please. The next person is going to be Ms. Atkins. Amy Atkins. You didn't put down what she wanted, um, Atkinson, sorry about that. You didn't put down if it was about the Burton Center, or is it another issue?
I'm fine.
You're good now?
I take everybody as, I'm fine.
All right.
I'll let you, I'll raise my hand if I have to.
Okay. I will keep it on reserve. All right. The next individual is Jason Sahaney.
The other Jason.
Right there in the chair, sir.
I don't have a PowerPoint to go with it, but I just.
Your address, please, for the record.
Romulus Middle School. I'm a Romulus School District employee. I do not live in the city.
Thank you.
My children have attended schools here, though, in the past, and I consider myself part of the Romulus family. I've worked here for almost 15 years now, and I have supported the schools in everything, in every position that I've held, whether it's been popular positions or unpopular positions. I always stand before you, you know, and I feel give you exactly what I think is best and what I get from the people that I speak with and the people that I think, and things that I think are educationally appropriate and sound for the district, because that is my number one concern here, is the kids. I take offense with the fact that we, the implications that we don't know what's best for our kids. I think we know what's best, and it's what we're doing. We make AYP every year. We consistently receive blue ribbon awards. I mean, the rarity of having two blue ribbon schools in the same district, in the district size of ours, is a rarity across the state. So, as far as I'm concerned, we know what's best. We're on the right track. We're moving in the right direction. I was before this board before and said I had concerns about the property even being put up. We, I raise this concern. I agree with the superintendent pulling the property from, from listing or whatever the circumstances around, whether he did it before or after. I full-heartedly support, because I think anybody coming in with a competing organization will destroy our schools. And that's the bottom line. And I know that myself, on behalf of RASA, I'd be more than willing to come back to the negotiating table and talk about further, further cuts and how we could help support the district in these funding crises. But I do think we have taken enormous cuts and enormous job responsibilities increase and everything, and we've done it for the kids. We've done it for the education of the community, and we've done it to help support this community, not to help our home pockets, not to help my, you know, my own school district, to help the school district here. And I think we will continue to do it. I think your employees will continue to do it and support you through a budget. If we have to go into the black and if we have to go into, you know, deficit spending, then, then we do that. Then we do it, and we come up with a plan of action and how to move ourselves out of the situation. But we have never given up. We have never taken the easy road, and we've done what we needed to do by cutting our budgets over the past five, six, seven years, cutting our budgets, cutting spending. I mean, everybody knows, I can go back to talking about the days when we used to spend $300 a week on hot chocolates and coffees, right? And we cut those, and because we've done what's right over the past eight, 10 years to what's right for our kids. And to come in now and see it destroyed by an outside organization would be shameful.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have any questions from the board? I have no other requests from public comment. Ms. Kraut, do you have any comments about this item? Questions?
For me, it's hard, because I, God City Refuge is like one of the church families I'm a part of, and so, so I just, I would just rather not do anything right now.
Okay. Mr. Thede?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, frankly, I'm not ready to vote on it myself tonight, but when we went, started in March and April and May and June to balance the budget, we had to save money, and putting the properties up for sale was one of the options, and nobody came, and excuse me if I missed Mr. Sahaney that night, but nobody came and spoke about us not putting the properties up for sale. Okay? I don't, you know, and I'm not supporting a charter school whatsoever, but we have these buildings up for sale. I think they should stay on the market, and we choose to, obviously, we need the money for the district. Because next year, if we don't take the $610,000, we have to lay off 44 employees. What's going to happen? You guys are going to read back here and say you should have sold that building. To balance this $2 million is why we put this property up for sale, because we were $2 million to balance in our budget. And it's a sneaky way to balance a budget by putting properties up for sale, but I can't do this every year and sit up here and balance a budget by putting properties up for sale. And anytime someone wants to come buy it, a McDonald's wants to probably say, well, we're going to make that McDonald's mad, because they're five miles down the road, and we keep pulling crap off the, the agenda or our budget, when we say we needed to sell these properties. So, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight, but eventually, we're going to have to sell this building. If we thought it was of worth, we wouldn't even put it up for sale, correct? We put four or five properties up for sale, because we deemed we don't need them anymore. Okay? They're made to balance our budget. So whoever we sell it to, we have to think about who we sell it to, obviously, but, I mean, nobody voiced their concerns, and we knew what the concerns were back then, that somebody could buy this property that we're not happy with.
I did this to be.
Okay. And I, and I apologize if I didn't hear you that night.
I worked 2:30 till 11:00, Mr. King. I would have attended your meeting.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not dogging anybody for not.
And I also explained when we put those on the block.
And I understood that. And we said that as a board, that somebody could buy this property.
So it wasn't nobody.
Okay. Obviously, you misunderstood what I just said. I was talking about the people at the microphone coming up, not you.
Okay.
Okay? So don't interrupt me.
All right, let's go.
You had your time to talk. So, I'm not for or against any sell of this building. We put it in a budget to balance it for a reason, put it up for sale, and we just can't pull it every time we don't like somebody who's going to do it, because to me, that just shows how incompetent we are, really. And, and it's sad to say, but sometimes I question Romulus schools too, because I'm having a problem in a Romulus school with my daughter. And I'm questioning some of our policies and things like that, which, which really sucks to say that as a school board member, that I'm happy myself with one of our Romulus schools. And I'm waiting to see what the remedy is going to be for that. But I don't support it one way or the other, other than we put it in a budget, and I, we just can't pull every time, because next year, if we're $700,000 short and people get laid off, we're going to face the same barrage of questions.
You put in a charter school, there's going to be more people laid off.
I didn't say I want to put a charter school in.
Okay.
If they charter schools, we'll go send.
I would like to see this property stay on and have more people bid on it. And if, if our attorney says we don't have to sell it, that we can choose who we want to sell it, but then my other question is, what about litigation? If we get sued, how much money do we lose?
Okay.
So that's something that we need to address later on, too. But that's my concern, is, I'm not for or against it, but we, we put these into budget to balance a budget, we could keep all our employees as of last year and keep some of our things, so.
All right.
I appreciate everybody for coming out, really.
Ms. Fundenberg?
I just think that we need to really kind of dig into the pros and cons of both of these offers, and we have not done that yet as a board.
Okay. Ms. Buckwood?
I said it exactly. And I just want to say, I, I think for Carl and for, for Tom, I think that was absolutely, just as a board member, my opinion, that was absolutely the right decision to make, so we could get. And the reason I said that is so we can get all the information and discuss it as a board, so we know all the pros and cons, and we know when our eyes open what we're up against. And I think we, our colleagues just need to talk about it and look at everything, and then we'll weigh it out, and then we'll come back with an informed decision. I don't want to make, I don't like to do things hasty. I like to do everything, I always say decent and in order. And that's how, that's how I operate. So I think it was absolutely the right decision, Tom. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I think it was absolutely the right decision.
Thank you. Ms. Gere?
I agree. I'm also not in a position to make a decision tonight on this either. I wish that we had met as a board sooner and had discussed and delved into these further. Maybe going forward, we can do that more often and have these meetings more often where we, you know, other than our two times a month when something comes up. I'd also like to know if by taking all of the properties off of the market, what we could do budget-wise. I want to know what our pros and cons are going to be for that. And I'd also like to delve into and look at both of the offers and, and see what, see what we have. I just, I just think we need more time on this to look through it before we make any final decisions.
Mr. McLaughlin? I'm on the record. Thank you. Okay. All right, my turn. Mr. McLaughlin asked for a meeting in regards to the situation with Mr. Weiss pulling the thing off, the market, the property off the market. And the Facebook posting has been a huge turmoil throughout this district. I have received numerous calls, numerous pats on the back, numerous ridicule, whatever you want to say about it, but there's been verbal comments about it. Some supportive, some negative. Either way, everybody's entitled to their opinion. Mr. Weiss called me while I was at work on October 31st, while I was working, and he said, "You got a minute?" I said, "Yes, in between the trucks." Because I work in a scalehouse, and it's pretty high-pressured. He asked me my opinion. I told him my opinion, and I gave him my grounds of my opinion. I think the community would be in an uproar. We are starting to gain the respect of the community as a board of education. I feel it would have adverse effects on our community, because it would take students from our building, and it would lose funding for our buildings that support critical programs that some of our students have been able to pursue, college degrees and professions. I gave him that as my opinion. I did not direct him. There was a Facebook blast out there about abusing my authority as the president, titled or authored by Mr. McLaughlin. Said, "I abused my authority because I took the property off. I did not." You heard that comment from Mr. Weiss, that I gave you, gave him my opinion. The meeting was canceled, and I sent an email out to all the board members after me personally, and Mr. King will verify this if he'd like, if you want, but I had a phone conversation with him, because I did not want to hear it through third party or anything else. It was a conversation with Mr. King himself, the attorney for the district. And the email I sent out after numerous, and many times, numerous conversations with Mr. Weiss and Mr. McLaughlin over the subject and this issue, the meeting was canceled because, one, Mr. King needed to research the offers, because the offers came in and changed the demographics of the meeting. Mr. McLaughlin wanted the meeting to examine whether or not Mr. Weiss did or did not overstep his authority by taking it off. Mr. King could not answer that question. He could not give us legal opinion at that time, because he did not have time to research and gain all the documentations to validate yes or no on that. Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So based on advice from our legal counsel, that meeting was canceled, and I sent that email to all board members to indicate that is why it was canceled. Now, if there's a problem with me canceling the meeting, fine. I tried on two times to call Mr. McLaughlin to explain in person or on the phone about this meeting. I'm not going to get into slamming anybody or anything else, and I did not comment on Facebook. People inquired me on Facebook about it, because I have an account, too. I said, "If you want to know, call me." Okay? There was a lot of questions that many of my colleagues on this board had in reference to this. How did Mr. McLaughlin get involved? How did he find out it? Why was he there? What was he doing? I could not answer them. I was not going to answer them. It would be wrong for me to answer them. He needed to answer them questions. And he did address some of them questions today, and I hope the board members got their answers. I cannot speak for the man on what he did, how he did, or where he was at. I know he's a consultant. He does work with Mayor Lambert on numerous occasions and projects, and he's had, worked with him on his political elections, okay? But the charter school stuff, that, I am not opposed to it. I'm not declined to it. I know it's an offer. I am trying to be optimistic about the whole thing, too. But I think by having it, when Mr. Weiss asked me my opinion, I expressed my opinion on what I thought, not only as the president of the Board of Education for Romulus Community Schools, but also a taxpayer and a resident, that I've lived here over 20-some years since I've came back from the military and grew up in this community and went to school and graduated. I've raised two kids that have graduated, and they've went on to college, okay, and have got good careers. Okay? I like this community. I'm proud of this community. That's where I hang my hat. That's all I have to say.
I have a couple corrections to make.
Go ahead, Mr. Weiss.
I have a couple clarifications. First of all, Board Policy 3950 says, "Before a sale is completed, the potential use of property shall be considered, particularly as it may affect the neighborhood in which it is located." I believe that's why all these people are here tonight, because they want to express their opinion about how that property is being used. They're not anti-charter school people, per se. We're not anti-charter school people, per se. And Mr. Cromwell, you mentioned that someone said to you that we don't like you. I'd like to know who said that.
It was reported to me that someone said they didn't like the purpose of what the building was gonna be used for.
And reported to you by who?
My client.
And, is your client in the room?
I represent School Property LLC.
Are they in the room?
No.
Did they talk to anyone? Uh, because none of us here has talked and, has spoken to School Properties LLC that I'm aware of. Ms. Posigal, you've had contact with some people, have you spoken to them?
I don't think the individual I spoke to is from School Property.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin, you've had contact, have you spoken to School Properties LLC?
Not as a corporation, no.
So...
Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Cromwell, I, I offer that, I offer that's misrepresentation.
Mr. Weiss, I, I need to interrupt you. Could you possibly give me one of the names of the individuals from that company? Is, um, I, I'm gonna try to go on, get, is there Jerry, or Gary, or Davis, or some...
You know, I'm not familiar with the makeup of School Property. I'm here, I was...
Because I just wanna make sure for the record why, because I don't know, Mr. McLaughlin, would you happen to know who the one that sends the, the proposals out to us? Because I did receive a call from him, but I'm trying to recall the name off the top of my head. Is there a Davis, or...
Yeah.
Mr. Secretary Derek Money's Bill Davis.
That, that's who I talked to, yes.
A real estate broker and...
Well, I just was say, I just wanted to say, 'cause that's who I spoke to and representative of him. I just wanted the board to be clear that you called me in reference to make sure that we receive your quote, and that's what we talked...
The offer didn't receive because we had no communication.
Right. And I explained to you, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Weiss was correct and didn't have any wrong information. I'm glad, I'm glad you're...
Mr. Davis is also the person that I was in communication with once.
But that's the only one I've spoken to about the property. So, I didn't know if you were with LLC, or what part you were, that's why I wanted... Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just, thank you, on the specific point that the, that Mr. Weiss just raised about the specific board policy, and I apologize if it's wrong, 3950?
Uh, 3950?
Um, the, the issue, first and foremost, that's a boilerplate policy that's provided to us from MASP through them and/or Neola. But, more importantly, and I guess this is a question for Mr. King, our, that board policy speaks to the board having an altruistic, you know, we, we don't wanna put an adult bookstore, or something like that, in one of our buildings. But that policy, by its existence, does not allow us to discriminate. Is that a correct statement, Mr. King?
If I haven't answered...
I hate to answer your question with a question, but discriminate on the basis of what?
Educational purpose.
On the basis of race? No. On the basis of age? No. The issue of whether or not the board is within its rights to refuse a sale, S-A-L-E, sale of property, to a person intending to use it for an educational purpose, has been addressed by my law firm to the board in a written legal opinion. I am not ethically at liberty to stand here and discuss that with you in this forum. That's why I gave it to you in a confidential written legal opinion. My suggestion to the board would be, that if additional legal issues arise on this, that those questions from board members will be funneled to the superintendent, and I will address them in another written communication.
Thank you. May I add one? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you. Second point I wanted to make, several of you are concerned about us refusing the money that may not come back again, and that's a lot of money, $610,000. I'd love to have that money. I wanna emphasize, and this is a very important, a very important point, if we were to accept an offer, that is one-time money. Alright? So, the argument that that will keep people employed, one time, one-time money. School districts that go broke, go, one of the reasons they go broke is because they count on using one-time money over and over and over again. We're smarter than that. One of the reasons that we pulled the plug on, on, on the properties is because we realized the financial ramifications that the sale could have on our school district. We wanted to give the board time to study this in depth, alright? No one ever said, "To you, or School Property Limited, we don't like charter schools." We're educators, we like educators. We're proud to be educators. We come in all shapes and all colors and all sizes. The third point I wanted to make, regarding the meeting cancellation, for a week ago, my understanding of that meeting was it, was it to, it was to be set up to review something under attorney-client privilege. That was on Wednesday and Thursday, I was in contact with our attorneys, they were available. On Friday, late in the day, I think it was about 3:30 in the afternoon, we received the offer from School Properties Limited. At that point, we had an offer on the table. Michigan School Code, I believe, says that a school board, or, I'm sorry, the Open Meetings Act says that a school board cannot go into executive session to consider the sale of property. Our attorney and I talked, he became very uncomfortable with us going into executive session, which, as I understood it, maybe Mr. McLaughlin and I had a miscommunication, as I understood, that was the reason for our meeting, that was why I had contacted the attorney to begin with. In the meantime, we also had, I believe it was School Properties Limited, and some of the people from out of town that we see here today, were queued up to attend that meeting as well. And again, we thought it best, because we couldn't accomplish the purpose of that meeting because of the offer on the table, to cancel the meeting. Our board president agreed with us, and the meeting was canceled. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. I do have one request. Amy, you remembered what you wanted to say now? Did you forget again? Come on up, if you wanna, if you still wanna talk, come on up. I'll give you the opportunity.
I'm Amy Agonson at 12030 Craig in Romulus. I'm also a Romulus graduate, and my kids go to Romulus. And I just wanna say that whatever we do, we have to do it for the best of the kids, and I am not ready to lose another teacher, another bus driver, another janitor. We're all a family here in Romulus, and I'm just not ready to give you guys up yet. And, if selling this piece of property is gonna save you, then maybe we should think about it. If it's not, we just need to go forward and talk about it more. Facebook is very dangerous in, in a lot of ways, and, um, I've always, um, uh, I've always thought that Rob brought a, a balance to, to us. His ways sometimes are, are a little rough, maybe around the edges, but I definitely think that that's something that, um, he does his homework, and, uh, sometimes he does it a little deeper than I have time to do, and, um, as parents, running the kids from one, one school function to another. But I just wanted to tell you guys that I'm very happy to be here, and, uh, as a, as a resident of Romulus, and I'm just not ready to give you guys up yet. We gave up a, a whole bunch of good people not too long ago, and we need to think about that. I'm not ready to say any more goodbyes.
Yes, Mr. Thieck, go ahead.
I, I question, um, is the Burton property the only one we pulled off? What about Mount Pleasant and Flynn and Smith? What about those properties?
Burton and Mount Pleasant were both pulled off.
Okay, how many properties do we still have on the market?
Uh, I'd have to count.
So, what's gonna prevent this from happening next week now, when someone puts an offer in at another school? We're gonna be here at the same table again, fighting this problem, until we come together and talk about this. Should we pull them all off? If we do, how does that affect the budget that we, or the budget that we balance? Does that put us into a deficit budget?
Will you balance...
Because those properties were on the budget to balance the budget. So, if we pull those off, technically, that's the $2 million, or whatever we're budgeted, does that make us a deficit budget?
Well, it's in a work in progress. Remember that enrollment's down a little bit more than we anticipated. Also, remember that the retirement rate that was budgeted is about two percentage points less than what I budgeted, and that's real dollars. So, again, that budget will be presented to you on November 26th.
So, I, I guess, if we still have properties on the market, what prevents us from happening tomorrow now, that someone's gonna put a bid on that property, either to spite things, or just to do it, and we're gonna be back here at the same table arguing about this whole matter again? So, do we make a decision to pull these off until we can discuss this as a board again? Because obviously, it was presented to us by administration to put this on the budget, to balance the budget, put these properties on the selling. So, as a board, we say, "Okay, yeah, we don't wanna lose employees, we need to balance the budget, it's on paper, and then, so should we take these properties off, or this don't happen again? And we get an offer that we don't like, or, you know, now it's a, it's a store coming in we don't like, or whatever?" That's, that's my question, I guess. Can that be answered by you, Mr. King? I mean, should we pull them all off, because we're gonna be back here tomorrow? Really, if somebody puts an offer in? We have two other big spots of property that they can build on, anybody.
See if I can get by without the microphone. Lawyers are very good at telling you what you can do, not what you should do.
Right.
Whether you should pull them off the market temporarily, permanently, is your decision as a board. There's nothing legally prohibiting you from doing that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Addressing your comments, John, this is the second year these properties have been included in our budget as a budget maneuver. As we all know, they were, the administration had suggested that that be done as a budget saving mechanism a year ago, but they were never listed. And that's when this board, when it became budget time again this year, this board took action to list those properties. It is my opinion, and that's for what it's worth, if we pull these properties off, then we, by law, have to balance our budget. That means some of the cuts that happened when we were having issues passing a millage may resurface again. I will not vote to establish a deficit budget. I won't do it. This district has been spending its fund equity for many years. We can lay blame at Lansing's feet all we want. Lansing doesn't write the checks in Romulus, we do. And it's time to break the cycle. Thank you.
From what I'm getting here from all the members, um, is there anybody, I mean, is everybody in favor of not making a decision on the property today? Is that correct? Is anybody, am I incorrect on that, by anybody?
I'm not ready to do it. I'm not ready to do it.
Sandy?
I, I don't want to do it.
John?
I'm, I'm, can't make a decision.
Danielle?
No.
Cheryl?
No.
Theresa?
No.
You're fine? Okay. Well, it's 6-1 that we're not ready to make it, so...
No, I think it's 7-0.
So, oh, alright, I was...
No, I'm fine, I'm fine that we...
Alright, postpone. Okay. We're gonna put the, the action, possible property selling, offer, action, whatever you wanna call it here, to a future date, and go from there. The next item?
Can I clarify, was that the possible action item?
Yeah, the possible action item.
Okay, so we're tabling?
Yeah, we're tabling that to a later date. Okay.
Table in it?
It's table in the action item, so... Okay.
Yeah, can we schedule signing?
Yes, well, that's, that's...
Other than before November 26?
Yeah, well, that's good, that's gonna be one of the ones that we're gonna bring up here towards the end. Uh, probably, it's gonna be November 19th, 'cause we need to keep that open for a couple things, so it's probably gonna be... Okay? Alright. Okay, the next item is item number nine, the district redesign. I think, Mr. McLaughlin, you got anything you wanna say about the early, early college?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was gonna ask board members, um, I mean, I can kinda go through the mechanics of the program if you'd like tonight, but I don't have anything specific for Romulus yet. We won't be meeting, we rescheduled, uh, our first committee meeting until the 19th, I'm sorry, our second committee meeting. We, we're still gathering some, some research, but, uh, if you would like, I can spend a couple minutes and explain a little bit in more detail, but I don't wanna waste your time.
Could you give the date?
Give, give it the date, and then, when the next meeting is...
Okay. For everybody's benefit, um, the early college program, uh, we're, we're investigating bringing a program to Romulus that would allow, um, our students that enter the program to achieve not only a high school diploma, but an associate's degree upon graduation. It would be what is considered to be a minimal cost to parents, meaning they'd pay for the books, and there's still some question, do we provide transportation, don't we? We've gotta work that out in the committee. The way the process works, ladies and gentlemen on the board, it adds a fifth year to the high school, uh, for those students that enroll in the program. Their, their traditional junior and senior year, and what we'll refer to as their super senior year, they would take a majority of AP classes. Upon successful completion of those classes, where they would articulate the credits from those classes, and the additional classes they take with whoever we choose to partner with, would total 62 credits. And that's how they would achieve this, the associate's degree. Now, the committee is, is, um, addressing, we're, we're looking at some different models out there. The one I'm most familiar with is Croswell Lexington, out near Port Huron. There are a couple avenues we can go. We can go to a straight vocational area, we could go to a straight academic area, we could limit the, the, the exposure that the kids would have, and I'm sorry, the students would have, to the college curriculum. Those are gonna be things that we have to work out, and find out what kind of articulation agreement, and who we partner with. The, yeah, we're only... Big question is going to then become, and, and help me if I'm wrong, Dr. Daniels, we want, we don't want to hurt the Voc-Ed program that we have now, because there's already some articulation agreements in place at the high school. We want to augment that, not take away from it. So that, you are all aware of this, one of the things that we are going to have to address, especially to make this program work, and to look at our budget situation, we're probably gonna have to evaluate our position on schools of choice. Now, and I just had a conversation with somebody today on the telephone about schools of choice, and I explained to the parent, because I've been very vocal, as we all know, on, on my position on schools of choice. However, data will show us, and this is one of the things the committee is going to get, is the specific data, so we can cite it specifically, data will show us, the so-called problems we're having are not those kids. They're our own children that are from this community. The data will bear that out. I've seen the raw data, and it bears it out. So, that's something that, you know, and again, they're teaching us, you know, the classes some of us just went to this weekend, we have to make our decisions, they have to be data-driven. And I think, once parents understand that, one of the biggest concerns I had originally with our high school and the Voc programs, is hearing parents say, "Well, my kid couldn't take this program, this program, because outside kids were there." We all know, that was because of the articulation agreement we had with Belleville. We had, I'm sorry, not articulation, the consortium agreement we had with Belleville. They gave us X, X number of slots in their programs, we took X number of kids in ours. And unfortunately, when we did that, some of our kids were either wait-listed, or just not physically able to get into our program. So, that's one of the, the downsides of a consortium-type project. I would hope that this project will, and, and it's, it's almost to the point, and I, I'm not sure if it was either Dr. Daniels or Rebecca that said, it's, the committee's getting to the point where I'm gonna have to pass the baton, and I, and I readily admit this, our professionals need to handle this. This is out of my skillset. That, you know, I'm excited about the program, I wanna bring it to Romulus, I want us all to embrace it, but, probably at the 19th meeting, we're gonna discuss, okay, where are we going? The intention, ladies and gentlemen, and I know I, I'm that guy, that was funny, Theresa. That goes to something that happened this weekend.
Clarify.
Yeah, I better clarify that. At, at the school conference. Anyway, we, we still don't want to... Yeah. What, what we're...
Alright, so, Mr. McLaughlin?
What we're clarifying, though, is that we need to, to move forward, but it's gonna be an accelerated schedule in order for us to accomplish. The goal at this point is to get this in place for fall of 2013. May not happen, but at this point, it's possible if all the ducks fall in a row. And that's the premise we're operating on right now. Is that fair, Dr. Daniels?
Okay. Alright. The next, the next item we have is communication expression from the public. I don't have any...
Oh, date and time. I'm sorry. I forgot to mention the date and time of the committee meeting.
Go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
I was just reminded. The date and time of the committee meeting is, uh, Monday, November 19th, at 2:30, at the, um, High School Media Center.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, then, the next item is communication expression from the public. I'm gonna veer from this just slightly, Ms. Williams, I know you wanna say something, but there's not a spot on here, and I know there's a person in the audience. Ms. Tamique Bowles, could you please stand up? Ms. Bowles was one of the members that ran for the school board, she's gonna be one of your new board members, starting in January. Uh, I was defeated by her and Ms. Fundenberg, so, congratulations, I wanna at least get that out to you. Thank you very much. And, uh, next is, Ms. Williams, go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening, Virginia Williams. Good evening, Virginia Williams.
Yep. You got it.
Virginia Williams, Abbey Drive in Romulus. I'm going to follow the rest of them. I would just like to say to the board, nothing personal against anyone, but we as citizens, when we elect you, we look for you to have a heart, you know, and stand strong in the decisions. We didn't get here overnight. And so, as John said, you're going to have some people mad, you're going to have some people happy. But we elected you to make the best decisions possible for our entire district. When you said you wasn't going to make any cuts after, you know, the millage passed, then you should have had a plan. And I would ask the board, I don't know if this is legal, but before you do something like this, really before we seen it on Facebook, or before it was brought to my attention, I hadn't seen it on Facebook, we should know about it. We should know that both buildings was offered and who was, you know, making the offer, and maybe the citizens could have came before you before tonight. We shouldn't have to find it out from the street. We elected the board to keep us informed, to be a voice for us, and we would appreciate if the board would do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, just a comment briefly on what you said. That was some of the concerns from the members. It was moving too quick, and they wanted to hear from the community, too, on what they thought about it, too. So it wasn't just one person's idea or two people's comments. There were several members that did comment that they felt the community needed to be aware of it, and that's why the word got out at the meeting, and that was a topic for tonight, for the community to come out and express their concerns.
But I'm saying even before now, Mr. Kudrich, it, you know, and even on things in the future, we should know.
Right. I agree.
You know, we shouldn't, the board shouldn't come to us only when they want something.
I.
They should come and let us know what they're doing in our district.
Well, we would have got the information out about this a little faster, but the way it all started, it was more or less damage control, trying to get things, forces trying to give you the information in a proper mo, it went out the wrong way, and I apologize as the President of the Board how it was addressed.
And this is the first time we actually got to talk about it.
We haven't had a meeting since this information went out either. So we've tried, but like I said, based on the attorney's recommendation, and they had to research some information, that was an issue, too. Okay? All right. The next item, we have to, unfortunately, we cannot go into executive session because one employee's not here, but the only thing we're going to do is superintendent's evaluation, quarterly evaluation. And when we go into executive session, there'll be no action other than adjournment afterwards, folks. So we will have to clean the room shortly after. There's, yes, oh, Ms. West. I didn't see the Michigan State logo. I seen the U of M. Go ahead.
Yes.
Come on up, Ms. West.
No, I don't need to come up, but I know you have an aggressive agenda. You are anxious to get into your agenda tonight. You're anxious to go into executive session.
Not really.
Today is Veterans Day observed, and in recognition of veterans who may be among us or those in our listening audience, so we go back and do the pledge of flag.
Most definitely. And you know what? I've even got something better I've always wanted to do. Young lady, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. Very programmed.
There's the microphone. Is that okay with you? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Chairman? One second, Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you very much for leading us in that. And Ms. West?
Oh, green.
Yep. Army green. Okay. I do appreciate you bringing that up, and yes, today we're celebrating Veterans Day, but we also have to remember, not all the veterans are here. A lot of them are serving away from home, and there's a lot of hometown residents that aren't home with their families protecting us, and we need to keep them in our prayers for a safe return. How many, how many people, if you don't mind, how many people in here served in the military? I know Mr. Williams did. Great. Great. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Now, go ahead, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I was just going to ask a question. I was going to ask if Mr. King was still here.
No, he left.
Okay. Because I challenged the decision to go into executive session for the superintendent's quarterly evaluation. To me, there's no point in pursuing with an evaluation for, and I congratulate him on moving on to other career opportunities. There's no point for an executive session. We don't, you know, any decisions we make about interims or anything has to be done publicly, and I won't support going to an executive session for it.
I need a motion to go into executive session for superintendent quarterly evaluation. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session for superintendent evaluation, quarterly evaluation.